This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance so that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome members of Troop 9 of the Boy Scouts who are here trying to earn their citizenship in the community badge. And so they are here to observe a council meeting and they need to interview someone afterwards. So there are lots of people here from whom you may choose to speak afterwards. So welcome, gentlemen. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
President.
Ms. Hanahan. Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
Do we have five members present? So we may proceed. Be still my heart, there is no amendments to the agenda tonight. So we will move on to minutes of the February 13th, 2018 meeting. They were distributed previously by email. Mr. Clark?
I just know there's a couple, and I don't have the ones I made covered. There's a couple places where my name isn't spelled.
Oh, I can fix that.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
But other than that, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? Second of Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no requests to address council on agenda items. We do have one request to address council, but it will come later in the meeting. And we have no reports of standing committees of council. So we'll move on to the third reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance amending Section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled Cruelty to Companion Animals. Mr. Clark?
Move to have the third reading.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the third reading.
Ordinance amending Section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled Cruelty to Companion Animals.
Mr. Clark?
Move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to introductory reading of ordinances. The first is an ordinance amending Ordinance 33-2009 to add the position of tax clerk to establish the tax clerk position salary range and declaring an emergency. Mr. Clark?
Since we can't, I think we can only do one reading tonight, I would like to move that we place this ordinance into Finance Committee. I know there were some concerns with the financial recovery plan, making sure that this will fit in, and I know that's being currently revised. So I think that's hopefully going to be done by our next Finance Committee meeting, so hopefully we can look at it then.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker?
Yes, Madam President. I didn't know, being Mr. Maloney's here and also Mr. Barlow, I didn't know if anybody wanted them to give any explanation of this prior to it going into finance as well, or if...
Is that your pleasure? We could have him come up? Would either one of you or both of you like to come up? Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. I promised everyone on council that I wouldn't make a long speech tonight. I've been in front of the Finance Committee for this exact ordinance two times, and the Finance Committee have asked every question they could think of, and it surprises me that there's more questions now. And so I was going to ask for one reading. I understand it's going to go in the Finance Committee, and that's fine. I'll take another crack at it. What I'm trying to do here is make a lot of people happy, including myself, and get some work done in the tax office. You know, our goal is to collect eighteen and a half million dollars, and to do that we need the right personnel in there. And certainly, we don't have the right personnel in there now because we have two empty positions. One is a union position, and the unions come forth and said, "We cannot fill that position. We cannot fill that position." One is an appointed position. What I'm trying to do is switch the jobs, appointed and union position, to get the union another crack at, here's a different job in my department. Maybe someone in the union is interested in that, and move the appointed position to the tax clerk. As I've said before, this appointed tax clerk would make the same or less than I'm paying my tax clerks now. The same or less. The appointed tax clerk will make the same or less. The $10,000 question is what the Treasury clerk is going to cost me, because I'm moving, I'm losing an appointed position in the Treasury office. I'm replacing that with a union position at union scale. So if somebody in the union signs for that job, they'll be making whatever they make now as long as it's in the seniority in the Section 11, I guess it is, or job class 11. So I don't know what that is. I don't know if anybody would sign that position, sign for that position, and I don't know what the pay is. So the two times I've been to the Finance Committee, I've told them, "Hey, look, I've estimated worst case, both in union wage and in medical insurance." So what's in front of the Finance Committee for the last two meetings since the beginning of the year is worst case, I could have estimated, hey, I'm going to hire the same kind of people that just left, and here's the cost, and then we'd be talking about like a $500 change. But I wanted to estimate worst case, and I thought that was the right way to go. So I'll go back and talk to the Finance Committee again and see what their concerns are. And hopefully, in the next, in the next meeting in March, it'll be back on the agenda. I hope it can be back on the agenda, and we'll try to get started and hire some good people here. So are there any questions?
That Finance Committee is March the 7th, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Is that before the next meeting?
Yes, yes.
So hopefully, that'll be it.
Mr. Clark?
I just want to thank you. The questions that I have do not concern any of the changing positions and things. It's how this will fit within the financial recovery plan. So having spoken with Anna Mary today, I know they're working on that, and I mean, she had said, you know, it's up to council how we want to proceed, but she thought in best-case scenario, waiting until those numbers are finalized, that we can look at that.
So I think it's a two-step process, is the way I look at it. One is, is to get the positions ready. But the second part of that is, council has to pass the new appropriations bills, right? And that bill's going to have a lot of changes. We all know every key is going to change that has medical insurance, because what council passed in December had the old medical rate. So there's going to be a bunch of changes. Some of the changes might affect the Treasury and the tax office. So the appropriation side clearly has to be passed later. Setting up the job is something different. Just because we set up the job doesn't mean we have to appropriate any money to it. That's just the first step. And I'm trying to get started and get ready, and in the end, I hope we're on the same page as to what it's going to cost when we pass the appropriation side, the job's already set up, I can get started looking for somebody. So it's kind of a two-step process. The only part in front of you now is to set up the job. You're right, the appropriations comes later in March, whatever, something like that.
Could be whatever, whenever we pass it, they have to be, excuse me, they have to be upgraded for sure.
Yeah, I know they have to be down at county by the end of March, so I know that March is a big month for all of them.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, Madam President. I would recommend that in the Finance Committee meeting, and I believe Mr. Bonzal wanted as many people there as possible for that one, because at that meeting, as Mr. Maloney alluded to, the appropriation changes are going to have to pretty well be implemented. Because that really, the final appropriation should be completed during that meeting because of fact, it has to be presented to the recovery board or the committee. Typically, that committee usually meets around the third week of the month. And so if they would meet the third week of March...
That we're meeting on March the 27th.
So is that after our second meeting in March?
It is.
Okay.
That's actually the day of our second meeting.
So my concern is...
It's the same day. It is before, that morning before.
So it'll be before...
Correct.
...our final meeting in March. So if we don't present a permanent appropriations to that committee by the 27th of March, then we won't have a permanent approved with their blessing to be working upon, which has to be done by the end of, end of March.
Correct.
So I would think at that, that meeting there, at least that Finance meeting, this, I think, needs to be hashed out pretty well. And then possibly, if need be, maybe we'll call another Finance meeting, you know, prior to the 27th, if there's some additional change that need to be made. But we just need to be aware that that permanent has to be really ready to present to the recovery board on the 27th on that morning.
Yes.
So just have...
And any changes that come out of that, council might have to meet several times between then and the 31st of March, because it has to be downtown at the county the 31st of March. So that could be a busy week for you guys.
Mr. Moore?
Just a question. For the county, I understand the county, we need to have a final budget down at the county by April 1st.
Yeah.
Does that budget have, does that budget that's filed with the county have to be approved by the fiscal committee? I mean, we pass, we do a final and then come back two weeks later and change it every year.
I don't think it does, but I think that was the goal.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, that was the goal of a financial committee. I think that's why they didn't have a February meeting, is they said, "Well, we'll get that in March." And that was their goal, at least.
I mean, you're correct, Mr. Moore. I mean, changes are made all the time, and actually, we probably sent one down after last year. We passed a permanent appropriations...
Just...
Just earlier this year, or December, I think so. It's already, you know, in theory, we could technically present that to the county, but I think we want it to be as accurate as possible, obviously, with all the changes that do need to be made. Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Maloney, can you talk a little bit about what happens when no one shows interest in a posting? I know that you're recommending a change in the classification. I want to understand, from your perspective, why is this the next step?
In the union position or the appointed position when no one shows interest?
You're asking us to consider changing a union position into an appointed position. And I'm asking, what's the next step? What did it, what was it that you considered?
Right.
When there was no interest shown from the union in the current position?
Right. So we're really not taking a union position and changing it into a appointed position. What we're doing is, the recommendation is not to fund one of the union positions that are in my office and fund a Treasury clerk position that is in my office. It's currently not funded. So the union contract doesn't change. One gets unfunded, one gets funded. I think what Leslie's talking about is, is that the reason we have to do that is, no one showed, from the union showed interest in the tax clerk position. So the process naturally is, is when somebody leaves and it's a union position, that position gets posted for a number of days, 10, 12 days, whatever the right amount of time is. And then any current union member can sign for that position. Assuming they have the skills, they can bump into the position, and then we go from there. Then I have 30 days to decide whether that's going to be a good match or not, and we move on. In this case, no current union member signed for the position. So then it's like, okay, what do we do? I talked to the union several times. They didn't have anybody in mind, so that made the hole bigger. The next step would be, I guess, to set up a civil service test, to create a list.
Right.
So the union would ask the safety service director to take the next step and to advertise and get with the civil service administrator, have whatever the proper test is at the proper time. That would create some list, and then we would, we would hire off that list. And so I was hoping to fund the Treasury position as a union position, repost it, and maybe a current union member would be interested in those job duties as opposed to the tax clerk. It would just speed all that up. And potentially make a union person happy, because they've said, "Yeah, I don't want that tax job, but I'd be interested in the Treasury clerk job." So it would make one of their members happy, and quite frankly, I would get somebody to fill the position quicker.
That does...
But it doesn't guarantee that anybody in the union is interested in the Treasury position either. So we might be back to, nobody's interested, let's have a civil service test, let's go through that process anyway. This is just totally different from the tax clerk position, and I thought, well, I'll try again with the union and see if anybody's interested.
And it, but it still does not fill your hole for their tax...
That's correct.
Position.
So the tax clerk then, now that's appointed, that's on Chuck and I then to go find somebody. So right now, it's on Chuck and I to find somebody for the Treasury clerk position. So because I think I can fill out with a union person, then we'll go looking on the outside for a Treasury, a tax clerk instead of the Treasury position.
And then whoever from the union might sign up, that position would still have to be posted and perhaps filled with, by test and civil service as well, because there aren't, eventually, you're going to run out of union workers.
Well, no, the...
Aren't you going to run out of union people?
The tax clerk then would be in an appointed position.
No, 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 no.
She means if somebody comes from the wire...
Somebody comes from another union position, you're going to have a hole in a union position somewhere.
Well, some, in another department?
Yes.
Absolutely. That's happened to me like seven times over the last five years.
Right.
So I'm very familiar with that.
Inevitably, we're going to be giving the test. Ms. Stevenson, do you have a follow-up?
I did. So just as a point of clarity, did the union do the advertising for the position? Did that happen?
Not yet, no. It's only been a couple of weeks. The union, the union posted the position for their current members. That list, or that posting expired at the end of December, late in December.
Okay.
So after the holidays, the first part of January, Chuck and I are like, what do we do? Well, let's try to split these things. Oh, next week is the Finance Committee meeting. I'm going to that and tell them what I'm going to try to do. And admit to them, I haven't talked to the law department yet, I haven't talked to the union yet, I haven't talked to Joe Gears yet. So this is still in its infancy.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Sorry, I should have raised my hand. Just to clarify on dates, so just because I know that there's the rush on the tax clerk to get before tax season, we've got fiscal plans coming up, so we've got the next Finance Committee meeting is March 7th.
March the 7th at 7:00 PM.
And then our first council meeting of March?
Is the 13th.
Right. And then we got the next council meeting is on the same day that the fiscal...
Is on the 27th in the evening, and the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meeting is on the 27th at 11:30 in the morning. So it's on the same day, but prior to the second council meeting.
Right, just wanted to clarify.
So in other words, what Mr. Maloney is saying, and what Mr. Sancker is saying, is that it would be very helpful if these matters were finished at the Finance Committee meeting so that on the 13th, we could have the appropriations changes that might be necessary, and as well as changes to the financial recovery plan that can be presented to that commission on the 27th. Or special meetings in between. Yes, you are correct. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to place the ordinance into Finance Committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance promoting the citywide street sale May 18th and 19th, 2018, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Did you all get the same email that I got today? I apologize, so I'll bring up my email, but I think there was an email from Debbie Simpson from the seniors that they requested that we change, Debbie Simpson at the Senior Center has requested that the dates of the yard sale, May 18th and 19th, be changed. The center is rented out that weekend, and the seniors would not be eligible to participate. And I think this is their major fundraiser. She suggested either the weekend of the 4th or 5th, or the weekend of the 11th and 12th. It should be noted that the Kentucky Derby and the Flying Pig Marathon are held the weekend of the 4th and 5th, and the weekend of the 11th and 12th is Mother's Day, and the last weekend of May, the 25th and 26th, is Memorial Day. So, Mr. Sancker?
Madam President, I would recommend that we change it to the 11th and the 12th. Mother's Day is on a Sunday, and these would be on a Friday and Saturday. But do we need to have a handwritten copy, or would the changes submitted to the floor...
I think if you want to make a motion to change the date from May 18th and 19th to the 11th and 12th, and we can do that, we'll vote on that motion, and then we can have the first reading as amended, and then come back with a clean copy at the next meeting. Mr. Sancker?
Madam President, I recommend that we change the dates of the citywide yard sale to May 11th and 12th, and that the ordinance be amended to reflect such change.
Is seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. It is your pleasure with this ordinance as amended. Mr. Sancker?
Recommend we have the first reading, Madam President.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance as amended.
Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, May 11th and 12th, 2018, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale as amended.
We have no introductory reading of resolutions or administration reports. We do have one request to address council. Pastor Sunny James, she'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. Pastor Sunny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, right here in our beautiful community of Norwood. First, want to acknowledge an agreement that I am under tonight, which I believe is a fair amendment to things, and I think I can abide by that. I want to celebrate a wonderful month of February that has been chosen and selected for many reasons all over the country to be identified and recognized and celebrated as Black History Month. And I want to commend all of the wonderful efforts that have gone forth in celebrating a lot of the great heritage that comes with the African-American population, and want to thank all of those who have continued to embrace the rights and privileges of those who choose to celebrate such a great celebration. Now, with that being said, I want to remind council that we have come through many obstacles as a municipality. We have worked through many transitional stages as a community, and I'm very proud of Norwood, how we've continued to move forward and to progress as a people, as a whole. I do want to, though, continue to encourage us, those of you who are in a position of authority, that as we continue to make way and make room for other positions in our community, I want to encourage us all to be reminded that if we use the same processes that we have used in the past, we probably will end up with the same results. And one of that is the perception of how we, as a people, the mindset that we have, when we have positions available and we have job postings available. My encouragement to council is to make sure that every population has adequate opportunity to those postings, because with a lot of the jobs within our community, a lot of the same individuals either get an opportunity or a shot at those jobs, or as we've seen time and time again, we then just cleverly switch positions. You get it this term, and I'm going to take yours next term, and you have mine. And that's fine, to some degree. But if we want to continue to move forward with the diversity that we all see is coming to Norwood, we should embrace it on every level within our municipality, whether it is a tax clerk or Treasury clerk. There are an awful lot of qualified individuals that may be outside of the loop of the standard communications. And so I want to be in close contact with some of you all to make sure that I have two individuals that are very, 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 very qualified, and that would far exceed any standard to meet that. And it would also help us improve our perception in terms of our diversity as a community. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to yield today, and I'm grateful for Madam President and all of you council members who strive to continue to make our community even better and better and better. And I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and I'm grateful to be a part of Norwood. So God bless you, and in lieu of the flood, I want to say again that our community did a great job. Our maintenance and road crew folks just did a tremendous job keeping a lot of our residents clear of any harms way. So kudos to that, and kudos to our police department for continuing to try to keep our roads safe and our citizens safe. God bless you all.
Thank you, Pastor James. We have no other requests to address council, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Ms. Stevenson?
Actually, I had a couple of questions for Mr. James.
Oh, Pastor, would you may mind coming up? I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
It's okay.
Your questions?
Pastor James, thank you for coming to address us. I'm listening to what you shared, and I'm wondering, are you already aware of where postings for jobs are?
Not totally. Where I get that from, Mrs. Stevenson, is in the past, I've met with certain leaders, and I presented information that would help us broaden our access to individuals. And I brought with me the professionals within the industry that had stated to me that those avenues had not been pursued. And so that's where I got it from. And again, you know, we are moving in a wonderful direction. There may be things that have changed that I'm not aware of as of yet, but based on my experience bringing folks to the table, they had not been given the same access or opportunity in a timely enough fashion. And so I just want us to just, just be more aware that there are other avenues other than the traditional ones, because when you have perception, you know, it might be on someone else's ignorance, but if we, if we can change some of the way we go about things, it might help the perception, which may make them more willing to even come forward.
One more question, and then I have a comment. Are there places that you or the persons you've talked to... Are there places that you or the persons you've talked to would like to see information posted, or any ideas you want to recommend?
I think the first thing that we should do, and I've made this aware to council for about two years now, we've got to do a better job of grassroots efforts. If we look back at our forefathers that have really succeeded in a way to reach the everyday common folk and the families that sometimes feel left out, or feel left out, when we do more of a grassroots approach, which we have done some of that here, but when we do it more, again, the main thing, Mrs. Stevenson, is helping to eliminate a lot of the perception. And I think that will keep individuals willing to come forward. So it's twofold. It's not just one-sided, one way or another. There's multiple things that need to be done.
And then my comment is, I hope you stay for the rest of the meeting. As we get into new business, I'm going to be sharing out about opportunities for Ward One residents to connect with me directly, and I think that's where we could maybe continue the conversation.
I will try. I have another obligation with the family in Ward One, but be glad to hear and have other families be made aware of whatever good is out there. You know, we've got a lot of good going on in Norwood, so we can't, you know, we've got to, you know, rah-rah and pump each other up. Whatever's good, we all need to just acknowledge it and be on that bandwagon. And thank you for whatever it is that you're bringing to the table. Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
I don't know if you wanted to put it under new business, but you talked about the committee of the whole agenda.
Yes, so I can do that now, or under new business. We have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for March the 19th. Mr. Thompson had asked about doing the fabric recycling, the presentation about the fabric recycling. I did reach out to the mayor, and he thought that he and Joe Gears could also attend that committee of the whole meeting. Previously, he was scheduled in January, I think it was Jan, no, it was, yeah, the end of January. The mayor was ill then, and so he and Mr. Gears will, as of today, as long as nobody's ill, they will be here March the 19th at that committee of the whole meeting to be after the presentation. So we will be able to have that discussion with those folks that you wanted to start off with. And while we're on the subject of meetings, Ms. Hanahan asked me to announce that she needs to cancel her Housing, Health, and Public Safety meeting scheduled for, I believe, March the 5th. She's having some difficulty trying to get Lisa Humble, coordinate schedules with Lisa Humble from Hamilton County Health Department for the plumbing permits that were going to be discussed at that meeting. And so she will, at the next meeting, will try to announce a date where she has coordinated that. So as of today, that Housing, Health, and Public Safety meeting is canceled for March the 5th. Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business? Ms. Stevenson?
We will have our next Economic Development and Community Engagement meeting, committee meeting on Thursday, March 1st. For those who are interested in joining us, we will likely meet every first Thursday. We'll meet at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. We've got two topics on our agenda. One will be business development tools. In our last meeting, we referenced the organization LISC. That's the local initiative support corporation. And so their specialists in small business will be coming to talk about tools, some of which are available to residents if they're interested. We'll also be discussing committee goals.
So that is Thursday, March 1st at 7:00 PM here in council chambers.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. So last month was the first time I was able to start what I think we'll call Council, Coffee with Council. It was an invitation that really spawned from residents of Ward One reaching out with ideas, and so we just gathered for coffee to talk through ideas. Residents had some specific things they wanted to do, and they were just looking to find out how do we get approval, who do we talk to. We met for about an hour over at Brick in a community room, and we're going to do that again. It's going to be this first Saturday in March. They open at 8:30, will be there at 8:30, looking for coffee, and have a chance to discuss. So if anyone is watching or is present and would like to join in, the first several cups of coffee are free. But beyond that, the goal is really just to have an informal conversation around what's going on with council, how can residents engage with things that are going on, how can we as council members hear more, while I definitely launch this as specific to Ward One, open to any resident coming, any council member coming, just to create more connection, similar to what Pastor James had shared, just thinking about ways that information can flow more freely. So it'll be Saturday, March 3rd, 8:30 over at Brick Coffee. And usually we're there about an hour, maybe hour and a half.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Thompson, I think I have something exciting for your committee.
All right.
As you probably know, I retired recently from Cincinnati Children's Hospital, but part of my job there in the past was something, working for what was called the Comprehensive, that was Injury Prevention, Comprehensive Injury Prevention Center. And one of the things that came out of that center is that we developed the PIN initiative, the Preventing Injuries in Norwood, where we have installed equipment into homes for children. Once we got into a large, a pretty large number of homes, and we are going to do that PIN again, by the way, that will be, our safety day is May the 12th, which is the same time as the yard sale now, but on Saturday, May the 12th, there will be another safety day where we'll be installing equipment. But once we looked at where all the injuries were happening, besides the home, one of the places where we noticed in Norwood where there were a lot of injuries were playgrounds. And so over the past, in the past several years, Children's has enlarged the playground at Upper Millcrest, they've provided curbs and mulch down at Lower Millcrest and some of the other parks. This past year, in 2017, there was a Hispanic radio station called La Mega, that is 97.7 FM, and they have a radiothon every year. And this year, the La Mega Radiothon, or last year, I guess, the La Mega Radiothon raised somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000 for the purpose of playground equipment. Our initial thought was to put that equipment in one of the Cincinnati Public Schools, and because of some difficulty with coordinating with them and some things that took place, it was decided that they couldn't do it in Cincinnati Public, in that Cincinnati Public School. So I made the case for Norwood and Northwoods Park, which will never be eligible for community development block grant funds. It is also the home to T-ball and all the little knot hole games down there. And there are also several Hispanic families who frequent that park over the summer. There's three or four Hispanic families that are down there on a daily basis. And so I'm happy to report to you that that playground equipment will be coming to Northwoods Park sometime this year. There's enough money to purchase the equipment, and in fact, it has been purchased. The people from Children's have been out and looked at the park. So we will be taking, Public Works will be taking out the merry-go-round, it's like the death merry-go-round that we all grew up with, but I keep waiting for kids to come spinning off of it sometime. The metal, the big metal slide that faces west and is about 5,000 degrees, and kids get their skin burned when they go down the slide, and it's about four feet off of the ground, so that'll be taken out, as well as the little curlicue thing where people fall off when they get up to the top. So those three pieces of equipment will be removed, and there will be about $30,000 worth of equipment, big piece of equipment that will replace that. That's the good news. The bad news is there was enough money to purchase the equipment, but it has to be a community build. So we need probably 30 to 40 people, and I'm not sure when they're going to do it. The person said late May or early June, definitely on a weekend. The company will provide all of the equipment, we just need the manpower. And so supposedly it can be done in a day. So I don't know if there's something that you and the committee can do to advertise this. I will certainly be reaching out to all the neighbors, and the Boy Scout troop here has been wonderful in the past when we did the curbs and mulch down at Lower Millcrest. Those boys, I can't tell you how many tons of mulch those kids moved, so I was going to reach out to Troop 9.
I'm sure Troop 9 would like the opportunity to do service.
Perfect. Yes, sir.
And we're still selling, so if you want any mulch, you can possibly...
I'll let them know. For those who didn't hear it at home, he said, "We'll still be selling mulch, so if you need to purchase anymore, you let us know." Very good. So I'm just really excited to announce that we're going to get the equipment, and want to thank Children's Hospital Comprehensive Children's Injury Center for doing that, for agreeing to doing it. And really, I told her there wouldn't be, not be a problem getting 30 to 40 people there. As I said, they will provide all the tools, they will provide music, we are going to hire a local kid, a local DJ, they'll provide all the food, it'll, they need people to, all the holes will be dug as well. So they just need people to put the equipment together, mix concrete, do that kind of stuff, so manual labor. So I'm happy to let you know, and anything you can do in your committee to get, to help get those people together would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you.
I know you're all about outdoor spaces.
Love it.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Brayden.
I'd like to thank you, Donna. You're a champion for our city, and I really appreciate you. Thank you.
I got lots of connections, and sometimes people run the other way when they look at me because I'm asking for something.
I know that.
You're welcome, sir. And I want to thank Children's for agreeing to do it, so. Okay, we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control about a license transfer at 3825 Edwards Road. And I think according to the email we got today, we only had one response, is that correct?
Correct.
And that was from?
Fire.
Fire.
And they had no objection.
And the fire department had no objection. This does have until March the 15th, so if you want to put this off into the next meeting, we can certainly do that. But the responses don't have to be postmarked until March the 15th, and we do have a meeting on March the 13th if you want to postpone this until that time. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I would recommend that we wait till the 13th to move forward with this. That way it gives each department adequate time to forward their response. I'm not quite sure when the requests for the responses went out, you know, that was just recently.
I think it was.
Yeah, so I mean, a...
Yes, they probably haven't had time yet. Is there a second to that? Mr. Clark? Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to postpone consideration until March the 13th council meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chuck Barlow regarding earnings tax report for January 2018.
To Norwood City Council, a tax is a monthly report for January 2018. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Tax Department. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Clark.
Do the report be received and filed?
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Joe Gears, Clerk of Council, regarding secretary to Clerk of Council pay.
I have to read it. Dear Donna and members of council, first of all, I would like to thank you for approving the appointment of Pamela Hill at the February 13th council meeting. Pam has been on the job for a week now, and it is my understanding that she's doing quite well. In fact, she has already utilized some of her technical background to help reformat the PC that was recently moved into the Clerk of Council's office. I again have to thank the Law Department for allowing TA Brown to train Pam, and a huge thank you to TA for taking the time to train her. Secondly, I do have to apologize for neglecting to include Pam's rate of pay in the initial information that was approved at the February 13th council meeting. As stated in ordinance 33-2009, any appointed hire who is brought in above the entry-level rate of pay must be approved by council. The hourly rate of pay that was extended to Pam was $13.50 per hour, is within the hourly pay range for this position. The entry-level rate of pay is $12 per hour. I do believe that Pam's experience is above the minimum requirements for the position. It is my understanding that this rate of pay is still less than the hourly rate of pay for the previous two individuals who served as secretary to the Clerk of Council. It is my hope that council will approve this justified and reasonable rate of pay. If approved, a copy of this letter, as well as a previously approved letter requesting the appointment of Pam, will be provided to Margie in the Auditor's Office so that Pam's first paycheck reflects the correct rate of pay. There are any questions, I will be available at the council meeting Tuesday night. Sincerely, Joe S. Gears, Clerk of Council, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark.
Madam President.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Based on my experiences, I would recommend that if council wants to approve this, they do this by making a motion to send a letter on behalf of council to the Auditor's Office that this is the rate of pay, as opposed to a motion approving it, and then the Auditor's Office may want to wait until minutes are approved at the next council meeting before they'll take action on the... It's getting the right letter down there can be a bit of an issue, but that's the way I would recommend to make this go as quickly as possible, is a motion, that a letter be sent on behalf of council approving this rate of pay, assuming that is council wants to approve the rate of pay.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Clark.
Just a question. I'm curious if this should go to finance as well, just because I think, you know, I'm not, I agree with the rate of pay, I think she's very deserving, but with the Financial Recovery Plan, and I know with our previous Clerk of Council being paid out of several keys, I'm just wondering if this should also be included in that discussion at that next meeting, on how that's all going to be paid out and things, and just make sure that everything's done properly. So I would make a motion that this be referred to finance. I don't, I really hate to hold up her pay, but hopefully we can work something out, but I just think this, with, like I said, with TA's pay being coming from different places and departments and things, that this really should be considered by finance.
So is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Any discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
I appreciate Mr. Clark's observation around that very thing. I think it'd also be helpful if finance could also get clarity on what was the exact previous pay. I know that with the several keys involved, that was a different pay situation than what is the case for Ms. Hill, so would like to get that clarity as well.
And I think that you're correct. I think Mr. Brown also did some IT work, and he actually worked full-time, and he was also a contractor, is correct. Where I'm assuming Ms. Hill will be an employee.
Correct.
So we have PERS issues to deal with as well, so I think your observation is well-taken, Mr. Clark. And in fact, I again spoke with April Davis today, along with the other clerk's position and this position, and she recommended council can do what they want, but both of those do need to be in the appropriations and the Financial Recovery Plan, so. And so I'm assuming that Ms. Hill will not be doing the IT work, but she will still be doing civil service.
Correct, yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
As a point of clarity, is Ms. Hill able to be paid until this is approved and letter sent to the auditor?
Yes, she was, her appointment was approved, so according to the 33-2009, she would still be paid at that $12 an hour rate. It just won't be at the $13.50.
And if the week, if you approve, if you have the Finance Committee and then you approve the $13.50 an hour, you can make provisions to back pay her for the hours that she worked, to make that effective on, from her appointment. I don't think that would be a problem, and I think right now there is, is that correct? Yes. And I think right now there is sufficient money in the appropriations to pay her at the $12 an hour because of your pay that comes.
Correct.
So we'll just take it out Joe's money.
Right. I don't get paid in lump sum, so it's there for the year.
Is there any, Mr. Thompson, did you have a...
I was, you answered my question.
Okay.
I was just wanting to make sure that we could give her back pay.
Yeah.
I don't like the idea of exactly of putting off her receiving the pay that she's been promised, but I do understand the need to, with fiscal emergency, to get everything into plan, so.
And it's the appropriations as well, because as we said, Mr. Brown was paid as a contractual, which is a different key than... as a contractual, which is a different key than personnel, so it's just a matter of switching those things around.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Yeah, so just as a point of clarity, Mr. Moore's recommendation was we send a letter with the offer rate to the auditor. We need to do that once if the higher rate is approved. We don't need to send anything now saying $12.
Correct.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to place the letter in this matter into Finance Committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
No.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
My vote of four to one, the motion carries. We do have two absent members. Mr. Clark?
Do the excuse the absent members.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Where's John when you need him? Mr. Brayden?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.